Ladies and gentlemen, please take your seats. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 2023 City Council Meeting. Tonight's meeting is being held here in City Council Chambers and being streamed live on City 12 TV, as well as the City Council's YouTube and Facebook pages. We also continue to post meeting information and materials on the city's website. The meeting will now come to order, and I ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Gruber.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Lightfoot.
Present, ma'am.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Pio.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Vice President Lupien.
Here.
President Melendez.
Here.
Thank you.
I would like to ask the council and the community to join me in a moment of silence. This month, I would like to honor all veterans who paid the ultimate sacrifice for our country, victims of gun violence in our community, and the late civil rights leader Reverend Stewart. Thank you. Tonight, we have a packed house. Welcome, everyone. I'd like to particularly acknowledge that we have a student group from Aquinas. Welcome to Council Chambers. And since we are, we just celebrated Veterans' Day, and particularly all those from Rochester who served in our armed forces, I want to acknowledge our very own veterans here within our own ranks here on City Council. Councilmember Lightfoot, who served in the U.S. Air Force. Army. Thank you both for your past service and your continued public service here in city government. Councilmember Lightfoot, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to invite my colleagues to the podium for tonight's recognitions. So, November is Animal Shelter Appreciation Month, so we wanted to take a moment to recognize impactful people in our city who work at Rochester Animal Services, caring for stray and homeless animals. Can the staff and volunteers from RAS, Rochester Animal Services, please join us at the podium to my right? On behalf of Rochester City Council, and in honor of Animal Shelter Appreciation Month, we would like to highlight the important work you do at Rochester Animal Services. The staff and volunteers dedicate countless hours to caring for animals, maintaining the shelter, and educating the community. Thank you for all that you do on behalf of our citizens, to make sure that the vulnerable animals in our city are treated with care, respect, and love. Now, we'll take a moment for some pictures. So, in addition, as winter and colder weather approach our region, we want to highlight the important work that our local organizations do to serve the homeless and unhoused populations here in Rochester. As I call the names of these organizations, I would like to invite the people representing them to join us at the podium to my right. Two-on-One Lifeline, Action for a Better Community, Bethany House, Cameron Community Ministries, Coordinated Care Services Incorporated, Catholic Charities Family and Community Services, the Center for Youth Services, Partners Ending Homelessness, Dimitri House, Judicial Process Commission, Reach Advocacy, MC Collaborative, Monroe County Homeless Services Network, the Housing Council at Pathstone, Family Promise of Greater Rochester, Trillium Health, On, Veterans Outreach Center Incorporated, YMCA, DHS, and Regional Health Reach. Let's give them all a round of applause. There are over 200 members of Rochester's Partners to End Homelessness, and City Council will also send this recognition to those who cannot attend tonight. As one of Rochester's Partners to End Homelessness, as organizations of Rochester's Partners to End Homelessness, these organizations actively work to address the homelessness by providing housing, employment, health, and education services for families. Thank you for all your compassion and resolve to serve those who all too often go underserved. We see you, we value your work, day in and day out, and we value your commitment to the citizens of Rochester. Thank you for your commitment to Rochester residents, and we look forward to supporting you as you continue your journey to serve our unhoused populations. Thank you. So, I don't know how we take this picture, but we're gonna try. So, as we continue to honor our veterans, I would like to first acknowledge that one of our staff members in the clerk's office, Joe Thomas, also served in the Navy. Joe? And now, we have the approval of the minutes by Councilmember and Army veteran Jose Pio.
Thank you. Resolved that the minutes of the regular meeting on October 17th, 2023 be approved as published in the official sheets of the proceedings.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The mayor submits the following: administrative cancellation or refund of erroneous taxes and charges. The council submits a disclosure of interest form from Councilmember Gruber on introductory number 398.
Thank you. That we received and filed. It is now the time for presentation and reference of any petitions and any other communications. Are there any petitions?
Yes.
Councilmember Pio.
Thank you. I'd like to submit a petition related to the proposed local law to establish term limits for elected officials. This petition received 1,346 signatures.
Thank you.
Possibly is in fact going to be looking at the narratives of the calls that come into 911 and recommending, you know, their, who they think should respond. And so I feel like that information will be a really good supplement to the work that you guys will be doing. So, thank you.
Councilmember Harris?
I quite just add to Vice President Lupien's comments. I just would like to know if the administration will be able to just make sure that we get the metrics for the evaluation. Just want to reiterate that. I know you guys replied and said that you would. I just want to put that on record. I do have.
Very well. Councilmember Harris, were you looking for a response to that just before I move? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Martin?
Can you tell me the difference between what you expect to gain from this study and the previous one that gave a few recommendations? We received a draft copy of that. That wasn't released to the public, but could you help me understand maybe some differences or why some of the other recommendations were not implemented?
So, the initial report that you received was conducted before we had a full year of data, and we were not capturing the data as we are now. So, that information was not helpful. And so what we want to do is have a full year of data that we can actually look at and use that data. And then those recommendations that they give us will be beneficial because it's real data versus what we had. And in that draft report, it indicated that the data was not being collected at the time of the evaluation. And so that's why we were not using those recommendations. And this will give us an opportunity to have the current data that you all see on the dashboard used as part of that evaluation.
That's helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And last question. Within this process, I know at the committee meeting, many of us shared some interest in collaborating on this and sharing ideas of what metrics we should be looking at. I just wanted to know, do you have any ideas about what that collaboration between council can look like and what we can expect?
So, in the response, we asked that if council has any questions that they think we should include in our RFP, to please share that with us. And so if you have ideals, we are still open. We have not issued the RFP, and so we would love to hear any suggestions that you have.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
Just a point of privilege, and I'm going to pass it back to Vice President. For our understanding on timeline, Commissioner, as far as submitting questions to the administration for consideration in RFP, roughly, could you give us a sense of what that timeline looks like?
So, we would like to be able to issue the RFP by the end of this year and so that we can begin the study. As we have a time limit there, and so, you know, within the next few weeks.
So, I want to make sure on record that everyone knows. Submit your questions if you have them in the next few weeks. Council Vice President?
Yes, I just wanted to, maybe you can follow up in writing. You said that there was not data available during the first evaluation that is now available, and I'd like to understand what additional information we are collecting now.
Great.
Yes, thank you.
Very well. So, with that, I'll move this item to a vote. So, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I will now read the Public Safety Committee report. To the council, the Public Safety Committee recommends for adoption the following entitled legislation. Introductory number 402, authorizing agreement for the 2023 Community Oriented Policing Services Technology and Equipment Program grant for the Blue Light Surveillance Camera System. Introductory 403, authorizing agreement and amending the 2023-24 budget to fund the 2024 Pedestrian Safety Enforcement and Education Program. Introductory number 405, authorizing agreement for K-9 Unit Veterinary Services. Introductory number 409, resolution establishing the lockstone boxes in city public buildings. Sorry, just gaining my place here. The Public Safety Committee recommends the following entitled legislation to be held in committee. Introductory 404, authorizing agreement and amending the 2023-24 budget to fund investigation software for the Greater Rochester Area Narcotics Enforcement Team. This report was respectfully submitted by councilmembers Mitch Gruber, LaShay D. Harris, Willie J. Lightfoot, Stanley Martin, Michael A. Patterson, Jose Pio, Vice President Mary Lupien, Councilmember Kim Smith, and myself, Miguel A. Melendez Jr. So, that report will be received, filed, and published, and we'll proceed with the vote. Introductory number 402, authorizing agreement for the 2023 Community Oriented Policing Services Technology and Equipment Program grant for the Blue Light Surveillance Camera System. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
No, actually, I'd like to abstain from this vote.
I don't, I don't believe we can abstain.
I, I've learned that I actually can, so I'm going to go ahead and abstain, and I'm very open to doing further research. I am not going to be voting yes or no on this. I'm going to abstain.
Could we, Corporation Council, could you?
Under Robert's rules and under the practices of this committee and under general practices, abstention has to be related to a specific conflict. You can't just abstain because you don't wish to replace the law.
So, I'm going to abstain, and if it helps, I can explain why. If it helps you understand, but I plan to abstain from this vote. But the reason I'm abstaining is I truly feel conflicted about the, the level of surveillance the system provides without public input or public understanding of what this program is and potential unintended consequences. And for that reason, I am going to abstain.
Councilmember Martin, that sounds like a no vote.
No, for me, it's an abstention. In the future, it could be a yes, but right now, I want to abstain, and I think it's something we can conduct further research on, but my vote today will be an abstention.
For the record, it's my opinion. That's not a valid abstention and has to be counted as a no vote.
It actually can't. And again, we can, we can discuss this further, but my vote is an abstention. I am saying on the record, it's an abstention, and it's a matter we can continue to discuss offline, but that's how I'm voting today.
President Melendez, I would respectfully suggest that it's, it's probably a bad precedent to allow people to just ignore the advice of Corporation Council.
Actually, Corporation Council is in an advisory position to counsel.
It's not true.
To counsel, they are.
Under this current structure.
Yes, your legal counsel is in a position of advising, and we can take or leave their advice. I am going to be abstaining. I don't think it should be a big issue how I vote, but it is my choice to abstain. We can talk about it some more and discuss it further. But in other bodies, people abstain for many different reasons that are not necessarily personal conflicts, and we can, we can continue to discuss it, but my vote is an abstention on the record.
Yeah, I think, so I'm going to give it to Councilmember Patterson, and then I'll follow up.
Corporation Council, could you explain that once again, the criteria for sustaining or registering and, you know?
The reasoning behind all the legal decisions and cases is that when you're an elected official, you have an obligation to vote on matters that come before you unless you have a legal conflict that can be identified. And saying that you're conflicted in your opinion does not qualify as a legal conflict, and therefore, it's my opinion as your attorney and as the Corporation Council for the city that this is not a legal.
So, could you also a bit more clearly define what constitutes a conflict?
A conflict is when you have, and you have all declared conflict at various times. You have a financial interest, you have a family member, you have some ethical, under our city code, prohibition to you vote. Other than that.
So, unless a council member has filed a disclosure of interest form declaring their conflict, there is no conflict?
Well, you would have to declare the conflict, but as stated by Councilmember Martin, that's not something that qualifies as a conflict.
Okay. Thank you.
So, just as a follow-up to that, so as, as the Chair and the President of the council, I can make a ruling on this, and certainly, Councilmember Martin is welcome to challenge that ruling. And then it will be a simple majority of vote of the council whether or not this is something that's, can be sustained or not. So, in the interest of moving the business along, and certainly, I welcome additional conversations out of this, I am going to rule that as a no vote.
It's, it's an abstention. I'm abstaining from this vote.
So, if you were challenging that, then we would move it.
You can appeal the ruling of the Chair or the President, but to move the business forward, it'd have to be an appeal to the ruling of the Chair.
Absolutely, and I plan to do that.
So, wouldn't that occur now?
Yes, that would occur now.
So, you have to appeal, so?
Corporation Council, can you tell us the process for the council member to appeal the ruling of the Chair?
We have not done that before, but the council president has ruled if the body wishes to overrule him by a majority vote of the body, that would be the only way I would see that you'd be able to overrule the Chair.
So, would that be a roll call vote?
That would be.
So, Councilmember Martin, you wish to challenge that?
Absolutely.
And do a roll call vote? Very well.
Would she have to state the challenge?
So, the challenge is whether or not there's an abstention or a no vote on introductory number 402.
Can you state it clear so that we know how to?
Right, right, exactly.
A yes vote is to support the ruling of the Chair. No vote would be to support the ruling of the challenge. So, a yes vote is supporting the ruling of the Chair.
That's correct. So, Clerk Washington will, will call a roll on that.
Councilmember Gruber?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lightfoot?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
No.
Councilmember Patterson?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Pio?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Vice President Lupien?
No.
President Melendez?
Yes. The motion carries. So, we'll move on to introductory number 403, authorizing agreement and amending the 2023-24 budget to fund the 2024 Pedestrian Safety Enforcement and Education Program.
Excuse me, before you move on, while on this topic.
Councilmember, you're out of, you're out of order now. We have moved on to the next introductory.
I'm allowed to ask permission to speak. I'm asking permission to speak in relation to this subject. I don't understand why it's just being like moved through. I'm allowed to ask questions, right?
On, on this particular item, on 403?
About the process we all engaged in where Councilmember Patterson, Councilmember Gruber, and others were able to ask questions regarding. So, I don't see the issue with me asking an additional question. I mean, my colleagues just asked additional questions around this process that clearly no one was well versed in, right? So, I don't see the issue with me pausing and saying, hey, can I ask a question? Like, what is the?
But it's after the fact. We already moved to the next item. I mean, I'm certainly willing to have this conversation, but it feels like it's, it's just an exercise in futility right now, to be honest with you.
I just, I think you can't, you can't, that's your opinion, right? And I have a different opinion, right? I mean, you, you didn't give time for anyone else to ask any questions. You just moved through. I'm able to ask questions. That's one of the functions of this body, right?
I think that at this point, we gave plenty of space to have a dialogue around this. I don't, I don't know that there needs to be further dialogue. I have moved on to 403. I will stick around and answer any questions you want at the end, and I'll be here.
Corporation Council, are you also able to stick around?
I probably will not be able to, because we would be happy to have the law of the court issue a written ruling to council making clear what we pay clear to council before, which is that the case law requires that you vote on matters that have a legally defined basis.
So, so I really would like to have dialogue about this, and I think that's been, been an issue. So, I hope we can converse about this.
All right, so I am going to move us to 403, as, as I mentioned. So, introductory 403, authorizing agreement and amending the 2023-24 budget to fund the 2024 Pedestrian Safety Enforcement and Education Program. All in favor, please say aye.
I have a comment.
Excuse me, Council Vice President?
I'm sorry to interrupt the voting process. I just wanted to state on the record that I bring up this concern every time that this comes through, and that enforcement is not as effective as built environment, and I want to see these four intersections, a plan for how to change the built environment to slow cars down and stop these accidents from happening. Thank you.
All right, all, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory 405, authorizing agreement for K-9 Unit Veterinary Services. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 409, a resolution establishing the lockstone boxes in city public buildings. I just want to stop there for a moment and say thank you to the administration for, for working on this with us, and we look forward to having this life-saving measure in all municipal buildings. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
There should be time for people to make comment. I just want to remind you, like, you're, you're moving through pretty quickly, and some of us have comment.
Very well. I will, I will slow it down.
Thank you.
So, now I'd like to make a motion to discharge introductory 404, authorizing agreement and amending the 2023-24 budget to fund investigation software for the Greater Rochester Area Narcotics Enforcement Team from committee. Can I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. Let's move on discharging the item. Introductory 404 from committee. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Roll call on that?
Councilmember Gruber? Councilmember Harris? Councilmember Lightfoot?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
No.
Councilmember Patterson?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Pio?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Vice President Lupien?
No.
President Melendez?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, now we'll open it up for discussion. In committee, there were some concerns that were raised by some of my colleagues related to particularly our strategy around Narcotics Enforcement Team and, and how the software is utilized. And it was my understanding in the committee discussion, I would hope that the chief or someone could, could answer this, that there's opportunity to work collaboratively, to really look at how this software and technology is utilized, and opportunity to spend some energy thinking about the impacts of this in the community. So, I would invite any colleagues to add to that, but I would, I would like to also ask the administration if there could be some reaction to that. So, the question is, with respect to this particular software, I know this is a standard thing that's been done every year, what are the opportunities to influence its utilization and understand its impact in the community?
Yeah, I'm not sure I'm entirely clear on the question, but I can tell you, in an investigation, the software is only used upon a search warrant signed by a judge. The information in those warrants is very specific as to what the technology can be used to look for. So, for example, the search warrant would say you are authorized to use this software to look for messages on the device you're talking about on the date of October 1st and only the date of October 1st, for example. All the information, once it is done, is then obviously returned to the judge who issues the search warrant. So, there's very strict criteria in place as far as using it on a criminal investigation. We have, however, had cases of, say, missing persons and even deceased persons where we've been unable to identify them, and it has been this technology that's allowed us to obtain their identities and notify their next of kin and make the appropriate notifies.
Thank you, Chief Vice President.
So, I understand that only certain data is admissible to a court, but what is in place to provide auditing that can ensure that data isn't accessed that isn't supposed to be accessed? And how would we know if data that was not supposed to be accessed or was tangential, maybe it wasn't used in the court but was used in some other way in, in the duties of law enforcement?
Right, so, we're required to preserve any of the data that is obtained, obviously for evidentiary purposes. That is tracked by user. There's an audit track. So, you know, anytime the court requests that we're able to provide, anytime that that data was accessed, by whom, and when, and that's all maintained in the system.
So, anything that they looked at is tracked?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And then say that there was data accessed that wouldn't qualify for being admissible for court, could that data, and how would we know if it was, be used against somebody in the community in terms of, you know, the police showing up at their house or surveilling them because they happen to be in this person's phone?
Okay, let me think about that one for a second. I'm trying to understand the question. So, again, anything that would be obtained under a search warrant is strictly controlled by the judge that issues the warrant. If in the case of, like I said, a found phone where we're trying to, you know, ascertain the identity of someone, that data wouldn't be maintained. It's not evidentiary. We have no reason to. It would be purged once we had turned the information over to the medical examiner's office.
Thank you. It wasn't quite the answer I was looking for, so let me try to ask it a different way. Say an officer is looking through a phone, right, and there's some data that they access, and maybe it's, you know, it just happened to, maybe they thought it was what they were looking for, but it wasn't, and so it's not admissible in court, but it happened to be the phone number or a message from somebody who's not related to what they were looking for. Could that officer take that information to surveil that person or take some other action that's not related to the court case that the warrant was supplied for?
So, I guess the difference would be if we're talking about an officer who has someone's cell phone that's unlocked and said, you know, which sometimes we do, hey, can I look at your messages and went through it? That would all be on body worn camera. And again, whether that is or not evidenced down the road would, you know, depend on the court case, but anytime this software that we're talking about is used and is connected to a device, again, it is all tracked and secured, and anytime anyone has access to that, we would know. There's only two, I believe two, I can get you the exact number, but right now, we have two certified people to operate this technology. It's done in a secure area.
Okay, so there's, there's only two people that access it?
Correct.
So, this isn't just any officer can?
No, no, this, no, this is through the technician's office. So, the process would be a, if we have a phone, we want the contents. The phone is usually placed in some kind of a, because we have to worry about signals getting to the phone and possibly erasing it before we get to it. So, it's placed in a secure box, so it's disconnected from the network and can't be erased. We then go to the court, we obtain a search warrant, again, specifies exactly what we're looking for. Then the software is utilized, the data is extracted, it's documented, it's returned to the judge. Everything is maintained in the system for evidentiary purposes with an audit track.
So, it's kind of similar to the FOIL process where, you know, like RIT, RIT department is looking for it?
Correct.
Okay. I think that's my question. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, so Chief, this money is going to the Narcotics Enforcement Team, and one of my concerns is that we are not addressing addiction with conviction. And so, I had hoped to have a meeting between myself, Councilmember Martin, and Vice President Lupien, and someone from your team, fire chief, a couple of community members, to get a deeper understanding around this issue. And we were hoping that that meeting would happen before this got voted out of committee, and that meeting has not happened, so we were hoping that it would be held in committee until we could have that meeting. But it looks like it has been voted out of committee, but our hope is that that meeting will still take place. And then, for clarity, to the Chair or to the, to Mr. President or to the administration, for clarity, we are simply voting to accept the grant money but not voting on how it is used?
I believe this would be authorizing the agreement for the service and to the administration, I think maybe getting clarity on that. But then there's certainly, I think, a willingness from the administration, from what I gather, to, to have a follow-up meeting on the subject. What I would also suggest, and I don't, I don't know this to be fact, and might want to get clarity from Corporation Council or others, but meeting in threes on legislation, I don't know if that's something that can be done, unless it's after the fact.
Yeah, and can I just, can I just add? I think this also goes back to Councilmember Martin's concern around abstaining. So, without additional information, I do not feel comfortable voting yes on this, but I certainly don't want to give back grant money. And so, we end up in a position where there's either a forced yes vote or a forced no with nothing in between because we are hurrying things out of committee. And so, I just want to make that statement. I am thankful for your team, at the police chief, and the fire department, and other members of the community for wanting to meet and discuss this. I wish that I could vote yes on it, but without more information and being forced to vote, I'm going to be voting no today.
Thank you. Councilmember Martin?
Yeah, I, I want to echo the sentiments of Councilmember Smith. This, we were really hoping to get this sorted out before this meeting in order to, you know, vote with all the information, but I find myself in a similar position, trying to meet with members of the administration, trying to get information, trying to make sure we have all the tools we need to vote appropriately, and, and I find myself in that same space. So, I will be voting no on this.
Council Vice President?
Yeah, I'd just like to add that your responses, Chief, make me feel more comfortable with this legislation, certainly, but I, I also, you know, understand what Councilmember Smith and Martin are saying. So, for now, I'm a no, but I do appreciate the controls that are on the software. I think that's really important. Thank you.
So, with that, I'll just jump us to, Councilmember Pio?
Thank you. Just a few questions for the chief there. This grant, it says it provide direct evidence that helps investigators solve murder, so would that potentially be looking into someone's cell phone to find who may have sold them fentanyl that killed them?
Excuse me. Yeah, it falls under, you know, in our flow chart, under the narcotics team, but the software is used for all investigatory purposes.
And it says other violent crimes as well, so could this also find where someone may be buying illegal guns?
Sure, again, with a probable cause and a search warrant from a judge.
Thank you very much.
So, any additional comments before I move to a roll call vote? Okay, so we'll, we'll move to a roll call vote on this item?
Councilmember Gruber?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lightfoot?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
No.
Councilmember Patterson?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Pio?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Vice President Lupien?
No.
President Melendez?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Chairperson Gruber, the Finance Committee report, please.
To the council, the Finance Committee recommends for adoption the following entitled legislation. Introductory number 367, authorizing a master license agreement with Unity National LLC. Introductory number 406, authorizing the cancellation or refund of erroneous taxes and charges. Introductory number 407, authorizing an agreement and amending the 23-24 budget to fund the development of an arts and culture plan. Introductory number 408, a resolution establishing the schedule for regular council meetings during 2024. The Finance Committee recommends for the following entitled legislation to be held in committee. Introductory number 410, appropriating opioid compensation funds for neighborhood ambassador programs. This report was respectfully submitted by councilmembers Michael Patterson, Mary Lupien, Kim Smith, Miguel Melendez, and myself, Mitch Gruber.
Thank you, Chairperson Gruber. That report will be received, filed, and published, and we'll proceed with the vote. Introductory number 367, authorizing a master license agreement with Unity National LLC. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Introductory number 406, authorizing the cancellation or refund of erroneous taxes and charges. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Introductory number 407, authorizing an agreement and amending the 2023-24 budget to fund the development of an arts and culture plan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Introductory number 408, a resolution establishing the schedule for regular council meetings during 2024. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Councilmember Gruber, do you have a motion related to introductory 410?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to discharge introductory number 410 from committee. Can I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Let's vote on discharging introductory 410 from committee. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm going to open it up for discussion, but before I do on this item, I just want to highlight a few things. And first and foremost, thank the administration for putting this forward through opioid settlement dollars. Mr. Mayor, I know we've had the discussion related to potentially expanding this and looking at all four quads of the city. Currently, we're looking at North Clinton and Jefferson with this introductory number 410. And in our discussions, certainly, we're looking at the Northwest and the East District, and in our engagement with the community and with my colleagues here, we've had some conversations about particularly Lyle Avenue and Monroe Avenue. And I just would offer for consideration if you'd like to add any comments or any thoughts on that. Yeah, so I think what will follow this, you know, this is a pilot project, and we're going to move forward with the two tonight and work closely with the administration to ensure that those two corridors are prioritized in early 2024. So with that, I'll open up for any further discussion. Council Vice President?
I just want to clarify. So we have a commitment from the administration that those two additional areas, Monroe and Lyle, will be addressed in early 2024? Great, thank you very much. I know the, our constituents will be very pleased.
Councilmember Pio?
Thank you. The original introductory number 410 had how much set aside for this ambassador program?
The, this introductory has $250,000, $125 for each corridor.
The one that included the downtown?
I believe an additional $125 on top of that for consideration on downtown.
And we couldn't move that and just add, you know, the Northwest District because we had the greatest increase in opioid overdoses in 2022 and 2023, more than Jefferson Avenue? Nothing against other districts, but if we're going by numbers and facts and data, Northwest District has been hit the hardest in the city.
Certainly. Councilmember Pio, that is a discussion that I've had with the administration, adding these two. In that discussion, there was consideration for propping up the first two as a pilot and then getting the other two online. And I think part of that is the process for identifying organizations, et cetera, to move that. So I do hear you, and I think that the commitment today is to move that and move into that direction. And I think we're close to that. But I think I would propose that we move forward with the item today and then push to get this done as soon as feasible.
Would appreciate that.
Thank you. Councilmember Martin?
So could, in the initial proposed legislation where the administration lumped in the funding for the two community-based organizations and undistributed funds were used for the bid, what happens to the amount of money that was allocated to the bid? Like, what happens to that whole packet now? And I think that's like a legislative procedural question.
Yes, so it's sitting in committee, and the intention on my end is to let it sit in committee at the end of the cycle, the current cycle we're in. That legislation would die end of December.
Okay. And could you walk me through why there wasn't an RFP to the administration for any of the organizations the bid or any of the community-based organizations who are receiving this funding?
I would say for pilots, often, we don't do RFPs. Obviously, if we expand this to citywide, adding more streets, and we decided this is something that has been successful, we probably would go out for RFP. I mean, almost everything in the city, we do for RFP. But for pilots, sometimes, we just don't because it's like a demonstration project. We want to demonstrate that this is going to be effective. So we'll go back, and I'm not saying this is going to be effective. I hope that it will be. I think that it will be because I think we have the right partners. But this gives us a chance to demonstrate not only to the community but to council. So we want to come back and say, look, this is what we were able to do. We want to expand this, use more dollars. This is not a lot of money, as you can imagine, to address this big problem. So this just gives us the opportunity to demonstrate it, and then if it's good, it's effective, and then scale it up, and then do RFPs as necessary. And I'm sure some of the people who are involved in this initial set of the pilot would then probably apply for those RFPs, as would other folks around the city. We have enough money to expand this through the opioid settlement dollars, not only to the areas that we mentioned, such as Lyle and Monroe Avenue, but other streets that are also going through the opioid epidemic. And you remember at the last council meeting, I gave the ZIP codes and where some of that is, and there's plenty of streets within those segments for us to expand this further, if this is effective.
Absolutely. Thank you. And one of the big community concerns, I'm glad it's split now, and for that, I obviously want to thank community members and also the president for really listening to the will of the body and all of my colleagues on council who advocated for this bill to be split. But I want to understand what the thinking was behind funding for harm reduction organizations and also like an organization focused on business improvement and development. Like, why were those two funding streams combined even when they're coming from two separate funding streams for different tasks? Yeah, I would like to hear from the administration, since the administration proposed the first.
I would say just to that, Councilmember Martin, is that we looked at it from a neighborhood perspective. 10,000 people still live downtown, and the work would be the same that would take place in the downtown area as would take place in those neighborhoods. So we have parks downtown where there are needles, where there are the same challenges. We had a telephone town hall yesterday in which residents that live in the high-rise on St. Paul, I don't know if you're familiar with that place, across from the Transit Center, across from Worldwide News, needles everywhere. And I would urge anyone to talk to residents that live downtown, that live in what I still call Manhattan Square Park, what I still call an Andrews Terrace, what I still call, well, which is called Legacy Tower. These are residents. These are residents of the City of Rochester who are faced with the opioid challenge every single day. We're faced with it right here in City Hall. We find stuff around in this neighborhood. So that was the idea. There still is a very real need, and you can look at the ZIP codes that encompass where we're sitting right now, and there have been overdose deaths and large number of overdoses, particularly in the Transit Center, which is in downtown. So that was the idea of it, of it being there. But I think the president made the decision that we didn't want to stop this important work while there was a back and forth going on, having the downtown conversation. But we seriously still need the same thing downtown, where for the first time in Rochester's history, you have 10,000 people living downtown, dealing with the exact same issues related to the opioid epidemic.
Absolutely. And that makes sense to me. And I really hope when we focus on serving the downtown, we look at organizations who have experience in harm reduction and really are focused on the opioid crisis and human services. That would be my ask in moving forward and providing the similar services downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, I would like to move to adopt introductory number 410. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Before we wrap, I was just notified that we mentioned Aquinas earlier. We have Edison Tech in the house, Edison Tech students. And I know that we'll also be celebrating a lot of students next month when we highlight our section champions, East High School. I got to throw a plug in there for East High School this month, my alma mater. So East High in Monroe, congratulations on your football victories. And Council Vice President, you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to, Chief, before you go, I just wanted to say thank you for responding to my request for information about the GIVE deployment in the Beechwood area. I'm going to follow up with you for some additional information about, you know, timing and numbers, but I did want to say thank you for responding.
With no further miscellaneous business for the council, we stand adjourned.